I guess Aaron's trying to start out the pledge of allegiance tonight.
Chris Frey Koviac pictures.
I think so.
Those are fabulous pictures he takes.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearing, public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget and capital improvement plan. The city fiscal year runs from July 1st through 30th under section 7.4 of the charter, and public hearing is required on the budget must be adopted no later than May 15th of each year. A study session was held on Tuesday, April 11th, and a budget discussion is on the agenda for later this evening. An optional budget study session is scheduled for April 25th. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023 meeting. At this time, the public has an opportunity to comment on the 2023-24 budget and capital improvement plan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, well, um, public hearing has closed. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items.
Hi, um, Karen Mal representing, representing the Parks Commission. There are five of us here tonight, but, um, as you know, our bylaws are up before you guys tonight, and I just wanted to say that, um, the reason for doing that is because we realized, kind of going through, um, they had not been updated since 2009. Um, and since 2009, in those 14 years, there had been several, um, updates and amendments to the city ordinance, chapter 289 for the Parks Commission. Um, so things as simple as the qualifications, um, the purpose and duties, the wording of that, all that had, a lot of it had changed. So we wanted to make sure we were in alignment with, you know, the current ordinance. Um, so thank you to y'all for, um, looking at that tonight, and we're here if you have any questions. And I wanted to also say thank you to Bill Gamble and George Saylor. They were so helpful in kind of reining us in, because we were quite ambitious with our first draft, um, and they helped us kind of keep things in line with, um, city preferred language and making sure that we were reflecting the, um, policies for boards and commissions that you all set forth. So, um, thank you, and, uh, we're here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, consent, and all items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next study session, consideration of the Masti Lions Club fish boil June 29th through July 1st, 2023, consideration of the Trinity Lutheran School first annual 5K color run, May 27th, 2023, consideration of a temporary activity permit for fireworks stand in front of 115th Cypress Street. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, consideration of recognizing Music Sparks Meaning of Masti as a nonprofit organization. Music Sparks Meaning of Masti has requested the city of Masti adopt a resolution to recognize their organization as a nonprofit for the purpose of applying for a charitable gaming license through the state of Michigan. They plan to hold a raffle at each concert during the summer concert series to help pay for the bands, as well as potential fall-winter programming. City council approved the summer concert series at their December 20th, 2022 regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution recognizing Music Sparks Meaning of Masti as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of applying for a charitable gaming license through the state of Michigan. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I thought we did this last year. Is that something we have to do every year? Didn't we recognize you as a nonprofit last year?
No.
We did something else last year then, because he was here.
I believe we, I-
I think it was just to approve that program, the program they do it.
Just approve that.
The music events. This is for a charitable gaming license, so we can do raffles.
I just, I just want to remember just having this conversation about him selling raffle tickets and doing charitable. Does this charitable recognition carry on year after year now?
I think I'll leave it to you.
Once we do it once? It does?
I have to not actually, uh, not against a yearly thing you have to apply to, because I think the, the form after, it's the qualification is what I'm looking for. So that would carry through, but there's also like, uh, uh, application for the, each event that I have to submit after I get approved through the city.
Okay. And we didn't have a discussion last year about you selling tickets and being charitable organization?
No, that's for the festival or for the, for nonprofit?
I might, I might be way forward, forward-thinking then, if I got-
You, you talked about, I think you brought it up at the meeting, um, but we actually are now, at the point where we're taking the steps to do that. We, we got approved as a nonprofit through IRS since then. Um, a lot of things have fallen into place since, since that last meeting that we're, now we're at this stage to-
Thank you and good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please take role.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance Z 23-01, text amendments to zoning ordinance. Ordinance Z 23-01 includes language to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for the use of feather flags for up to 60 consecutive days with the opening of a new business. Currently, feather flags are not identified as allowable type of signage in the zoning ordinance and are therefore not allowed. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of this amendment. As this ordinance, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance Z 23-01. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just nice to see a zoning ordinance that approves something that wasn't, rather than taking away something that is. So it's a nice switch.
I agree. I'm just wondering why it's only 60 days. Can it, is there a reason that 60 days is the number?
Opening of a new business.
Yes, the qualify. Hi, good evening. Um, so I know, uh, the planning commission discussed this at length, and I think some of the concerns with having feather flags is that we don't necessarily, we want them to actually promote and attract for specific businesses, but we don't want to litter the city with them all the time. So we talked about 30 days, 90 days, and 60 just seemed like a nice, appropriate fit. Um, that was a definitive amount of time and, you know, wasn't going to open it up so that we have feather flags everywhere all the time, but gives businesses a nice opportunity to kind of bring that extra attraction to their business.
And it's just new businesses then, right, or?
Correct.
Okay.
So the, the voting polls would kind of fall into that?
Um, so the voting polls, um, those kind of fall under city, like governmental business, so they, in a sense, they're exempt from zoning. So that isn't a concern with this amendment, but, um, yeah, we had talked about that at staff meeting too, so.
Anybody else? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the 2023 Masti Proud projects. Masti Proud has coordinated several large projects within the city parks over the past two years. This year, they have submitted a list of projects they wish to complete with the city's help. At this time, council could take action to approve projects proposed by Masti Proud. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
For?
Any discussion?
Can we, um, go over that list for the public that's here tonight, just so that they have an idea?
And Jeff, if you'd like to come up as well? So, over the last couple of years, we've had, um, some projects with Ms. Greby, Masti Proud, and members of the Parks Commission have involved as well. Um, the reason for this, you know, with it being, and I, they're going to be a nonprofit, but I think just in terms of procedure, we want to make sure that, you know, it's kind of out in the open, because these do involve, you know, the city funds, city time. Um, so we just want to make sure people are aware, because these do tend to focus attention to thing, to, to specific areas. And, um, if anyone else was to come forward to the community and to request type of things, I think we have to have a process for something like this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff to kind of go through some of these. I think you've been working with them on some of these as well.
Do you want me to go through them one by one?
However you want to do it, like just an overview, I think would be nice, so other people know.
Well, so there's 13 projects that Masti Proud has proposed. Um, some of them were at, at the city's suggestion, so, uh, we've been working together on them. Uh, a good example is the first one, which is limestone columns. So down on River Street, we've got the decorative limestone columns with the ornamental iron. They're dirty, they've got some mold and mildew on them. Um, so we suggested that, um, you know, those could be power washed. Uh, number two is, uh, public restrooms. Um, this was basically a cleanup of the area around the restroom next to where Goody's used to, used to be. So that's another one that, uh, we had discussed. Uh, actually, Bill and I had discussed that separately. Masti Proud had proposed that, so it seems like a good fit. Number three is tree lights. So there's several places along River Street where, uh, they would like to put lights up in the trees and then keep those on during the summertime and the evenings and add a little ambiance to the downtown.
Was that the art park?
Art Park was one of the locations.
But we don't own the art park.
Correct.
Who owns the art park?
So that is owned by, oh, it's owned by a private individual who has given permission to Masti, well, gave permission to, I believe, a teacher at the school to create it. And then, uh, the DDA then got further permission, um, to utilize it for public space. And then I think you've talked to the owners personally about, um, renovating it. So volunteers from Masti Proud have done a lot of renovations to it in the past couple of years, and so this would just be another addition to that.
Caught my eye in reading the, the documentation for this was the fact that, um, solar was not recommended by Masti Proud. So I'm wondering, who's going to pay the electrical for the lights? I, I am really a big fan of solar. I have a, you know, my yard, I have a lot of solar li, solar lights on my yard, in the back and in the front and on the side. I'm a real proponent of using solar when we can. It makes sense. It is where, it is where the population is gravitating toward. So I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that it was, in an opinion, was said, it won't last. It's, it's not practical. So who pays for the electrical?
So I'll answer a portion of that, and then I'll ask Kelly to come up and finish that response. In the art park, the city doesn't have any power there, so we've discussed that, and, um, Ms. Greby's aware of that. Across the street, in the parking lot next, next to Dick's Barber Shop, I don't believe that the city has any power there. So I think the only option is to, is to use solar, and we've discussed that. The next location, you're going to prompt me if I miss one, right, would be the, uh, down by the water fountain, which, um, we were reminded by the community foundation that the city has a lease agreement to have the, the fountain there, but the triangle is actually owned by the foundation. It was donated by the Sang family. So we do have power available there. And then, uh, across the street, in the two kind of half-circle gardens next to Friconno's, we do have power there that could be used. As far as the solar aspect, that was what you put in your- Okay. But you had put in your, your request that it wasn't recommended, and I think council would be in-
I, I think that's where I have the problem. I, I just don't agree. Um, have done a lot of study in this area, so I, I'm somewhat concerned that, um, that comment was made, and I hope it doesn't become a standard.
It's not done yet.
I think solar's a great way to go. It could be mounted on the side of the buildings with the owner's permission. It's a, you know, you could even put solar cam, solar-operated cameras downtown on River Street, and a lot of communities are doing that. So I think, I think we really need to kind of look at the, the advantages we could have with solar, and that's why I'm making this point.
I think they heard you, and, and I'll encourage that as well then. Um, that was, help me out, what number?
Three.
That was number three. So number four was River Street sidewalks. So, uh, they're proposing to power wash all the sidewalks from the buildings up to the curb, um, for the length of River Street in the downtown area. Um, that one I'm a little concerned about, because they've got a two-week window in there. Um, it's a very long stretch, both sides. I think it's going to take much longer. We only have water available at, uh, Goody's, or the bathroom next to Goody's, probably from the Maple Street Bridge, and then the next space would be down towards the Marina. So we'd have to work out the hours that we, that the work could be done, so we're not interfering with the businesses, cars parked on River Street, working out the, the water and then the timeframe. So that one, I think, takes a little bit more discussion. Number five, uh, was the, um, was re-landscaping that fountain area that I talked about. So, um, Kelly and I have talked about that, and she's aware of that, and I believe has set up meetings with the foundation to pursue, uh, pursue it with the foundation. Um, number six is really finishing up the painting that was, um, almost completed in, in the Marina grounds, and, um, so it's just really finishing up what was, uh, started last year. Um, number seven was cleaning up the band shell, and, um, in talking with Ms. Greby, the, they have been in contact with the J.C.'s. This is something the J.C.'s wanted to do. Um, one of the requests that they had was making sure all the lighting and electrical work, so I already met with Top Line today to get that started. Um, in the same area as the North River Walk. So recognizing that we've got a grant request out to completely renovate that park, they're, they're asking if they could trim back some, some bushes and do a little bit of work to at least make it a little bit safer and nicer until those improvements could be completed. Um, number nine is Memorial Drive. So, right next to the, the Dollar Store, I always get the dollars confused, whichever dollar one it was, it is, we put in curb and gutter to close, uh, the pavement that, it used to be a 150-foot-wide curb cut, which isn't safe for controlling traffic. So we put curbil on there. We've got about a three, four-foot stretch that we took the pavement out. We put topsoil in and we planted that with grass. People are jumping over, uh, that all the time. They did it all winter. So one of the members of, of volunteers from Masti Proud reached out and said, can we do something in there to make kind of like a rain garden? And, as we discussed it, um, I think it's beneficial for several different reasons. Number one, we are sheeting all the water off that pavement, and it would be a good place to clean that before it gets into the storm sewer and down to the river. Number two, plantings in there, I think, would add a vertical aspect that cars would see as opposed to, I've got cones out there right now. So, um, that one, we had been discussing all winter long. Um, this week, my staff already pulled the topsoil back out of there. We put, uh, beach sand back in it, and, uh, the volunteers are planning to plant that the last Saturday of this month. The cost to the city is $300 for the plants, so I think it's a win-win on all sides.
What kind of plants are you putting in there?
It's going to be dune grass.
Okay.
They went to, I can't remember the name of that, um, natural nursery up in Onekama, and asked for recommendations on what type of plantings would fit in that environment. And because it's got so much pavement on both sides, um, they thought that dune grass would be the best and the, the hardiest, and also absorb the most water.
We will have to trim that every year. It grows pretty, it grows pretty tall, it grows fast.
Uh, number 10 is, um, DDA parking lot. Um, so, across from the former Communa Craft, the parking lots, um, have islands in there. Um, at the request of the DDA, uh, DPW pulled all the shrubs that were planted during the streetscape. We repaired all the bricks from underneath them, but now they're pretty empty. So they're looking at placing some, some type of plantings in there to have it, give it some color and, uh, beautify it. Um, my only caveat there is just making sure that, um, what gets planted doesn't, doesn't require a real heavy maintenance. Number 11, uh, was the boat launch islands. Um, so this is down at First Street Beach. Uh, those islands are terrible-looking. Um, and so I think any type of improvement would be, uh, very beneficial down there. And, uh, we just need to identify what goes in there and make sure, again, it's low maintenance and will survive for that environment. Um, the li, the lions area, so really from the boat launch going west at First Street Beach to the stub pier, there's a number of synthetic benches that are along there. Um, I noticed them last year. They're full of mold and mildew. Kelly noticed them, so they're, uh, offering to power wash those and clean those up. And then the Marina Building, um, I think you're aware, the city manager has sent out the request, or suggested list of improvements that, um, that Masti Proud wants to do at the Marina Building. Uh, there's been some fundraising towards that effort. So, um, my recommendation on that one is, depending on the funds that are ultimately raised, that they work with Kelly Trevacino, the Marina manager, to select how best to spend the money and do those improvements.
The only two that I have an issue with are three and five, because we don't own the art park, and we don't own the parcel where the fountain is. So I, I have an issue approving that with these two, because we shouldn't have a say in it. We don't, we don't own the parcel, and we don't own the art park. So we shouldn't be voting on what they can do with that, since-
Yeah, I, I think you could support it, but it's, it has to be conditional that the foundation would approve and that the private property owner would approve.
So as I look at these recommendations, some are conditional, some are not recommended. How do we vote on this?
Yeah.
How would you say, yay, we pass it, yes, do it? But there's, I, I thought we were going to be much clearer and want to do these, these are all approved, that the city wants us to do these, and we would just say yes, and then they could proceed. But it looks like there's some confusion about how we would vote to approve this when there's some conditionals. I'm not really sure what we're looking for here, for us to say.
Yeah, the way that this reads, that approve the projects proposed, like, that's what's in front of us, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the two that are on there, because we shouldn't have a say in those, and some of them-
I think those two, and then the, the sidewalk one is one we, I think, because of the time, it's five, you know, a commercial's power washers, three to five gallons per minute, it's the entire length of a street. I think it's problematic, some of the areas, then dirt and debris, and, so I think that would be one we wouldn't want to approve. It, it says tabled on here, but-
I just have a question with the sidewalk one, because I, I get that. I mean, that's a large amount of space. Like, what does that look like normally? Do we, do we power wash the sidewalk at all?
We, I don't believe we've ever washed, power washed those sidewalks.
Oh.
So I don't, I don't know what we should do, because some of these are-
Well, a suggestion could be to approve the list, accepting numbers, whatever, whatever, and whatever.
I'd like to, I'd like to approve the list, but I want to approve the list that we can do. So if there's a couple that should come off, maybe the motion to say we should approve the list with the exception of whatever the numbers are.
Four and five.
How many?
Three, four, and five.
Yeah.
Three, four, and five.
So three numbers.
Jeff, would they use that water truck for, when they do the sidewalks?
Potentially, we'd have to try that out to see if it, if it provides enough pressure to make that work.
And I think, you know, I'm Masti Proud, Kelly Greby does a great job. Last year, we saw the Marina project. I think one thing we have to be careful of is project creep. I think we went on three weeks, a lot of staff time, and it's, it's great, because there's, everything can be better. You always realize that. But having a good firm scope, and I think that's probably why Jeff's kind of, you know, doesn't want to say necessarily approved on all of these, but-
Well, I don't have a problem with them doing three and five. I just don't think that we should have a say in it. We don't own it. Like, why, why would we have a say?
Right, exactly. We talked about that at the meeting too. If it's not ours to approve, we shouldn't be approving it. That doesn't mean they can't do it with the approval of the property owner.
Yeah.
But we don't have the authority to approve a project on the, on the fountain property where the foundation owns. If the foundation says great, then God bless them, but it's not our, it's not ours to say, I would want to go back to the thought, I say, we're comfortable that we can do it.
Yeah.
You know, agreed, yeah.
However, there are three locations that are city-owned, and, um, three of the, three of the five, um, are city-owned.
On which, on?
On number three, for the lighting.
Okay.
You've got the, the bathroom?
Yeah, 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 right.
The Marina, and then the-
So we're going to have to modify-
Yeah, but it's just the way that it's presented in front of us to-
It's just going to make it, it's just, the mo, the motion's going to have to be called out here for a second.
And maybe let's talk about three a little bit with the, the lights. I think, I don't know if there's been discussion about who's maintaining the lights, who's, you know, if something gets, um, you know, gets wrapped up in something, who's going out there, how often, we're responding to things like that. So there's, there's some other issues with that one where I'm not entirely comfortable with the, with the way it is now. We, we said they'd maintain them, but I think they're requesting that DPW maintain them. So I think that would be one, um, it's tabled for now, or-
The lighting complete, to take it off the table?
If, yeah, if we can't come to a resolution on who's maintaining them, and-
Okay. Somebody got in there, have what the motion's going to be?
I, what if we made a motion to-
Prove up on three, four, and five.
Approve the ones that you have appro, fully approved.
One and two, and six through 13.
And then remove the ones for now that are tabled or conditional approval? Is that-
So you have a motion on, you have an open motion right now?
Okay.
You could do a motion to amend the original motion.
Okay.
And you could exclude items three, four, and five. So you could have, somebody could make a motion to amend the original motion to exclude items two, three, or, excuse me, three, four, and five.
I make a motion to amend my original motion to exclude items now three, four, and five.
You need a second? Well, there's other ones that are conditional, though.
There are?
Yeah, number eight's conditional.
There's 13. There's a bunch of them. 11. Like, is that going to come back to us to, once it's approved?
So I guess, I, I guess I agree, but I'm a little confused on some of those, because like, number one, I think, was the columns, right? Like, I would just assume that's part of city maintenance to power wash. And then like, when we brought up benches, if we noticed last year that benches had mold and mildew on them, like, I, I mean, I guess I, I feel like we got to, and I think everybody on council agrees with that, like, we have to support Masti Proud and meet them halfway somehow, because they're really contributing to maintenance and helping us out. But I guess, I get where everybody's coming from on three, four, and five. I, I mean, if it's not our property, we can't make a motion on that, and there's no accountability there for us. I also get the conditional stuff, but I guess I feel like number one's probably not really something we need Masti Proud to do. That, that seems more like a DPW thing. Oh, I, I guess I'm a little confused on where some of this falls, on if it's just routine maintenance that we should be doing, and they're offering to help, or if it's, because some of these seems like, seem like great projects that we haven't done in the past, that they're willing to step up to the plate and say, let's help out.
I think if we approve this project without three, four, and five, we can give them permission to proceed.
And eight, because that needs funding.
Eight what?
Eight needs funding, the River Walk.
But that's still, we can approve them to proceed, and they're going to get their own funding, correct?
Okay.
Because, we can still approve the project, but these don't, we're not funding it. They're going to have to find the funding. So if they find the funding, they don't have to come back to us, correct? Would make sense to me, right?
I think, I think eight's one where we're, we went out for a grant, so we just don't want to spend a lot of resources, potentially. I mean, there is a, right, if, do we want to spend-
They want to trim the bushes, make it nicer.
And that's fine, right, but if we're, if we're redoing-
So I think, I think we can approve this without three, four, and five, as a motion has been made, and there's going to be some details that are going to work out amongst fundraising and other stuff, but we need to give them the green light. I mean, they have worked so hard to get to here today. I, I-
I agree with that. I guess my concern is, like, with Masti Proud, they're not just going out doing their own thing. They're working in collaboration, so it's not like they're just going to go start removing things and we're not going to know about it. So I guess I feel like the same with, I think, what I was, I'm hearing Dave say, was with number eight, like, that funding, I feel like we have to trust that they're going to be in communication with us. They're not just going to spend city money, and we're not- with us. They're not just gonna spend city money and we're not gonna know about it because that's not allowed.
There's no city money provided for that project. And they have demonstrated a really good capacity to communicate with the DPW director and talk about these projects as they get them together. So, and they also, as I believe, they're bringing their money and depositing it at City Hall so it can be dispersed.
I agree.
Through the financial office. Is that still true?
Okay.
May I ask, I, I really do appreciate what Manistee Proud has done, but I am concerned, the closer they get to working with our city, are they a 501(c)(3) yet?
No.
Has an application been made to, for that? Yeah, I'm sorry to ask you this, but it's important to me to know this.
Yeah, no, we, we applied. We have the nonprofit corporation status through the state. We're waiting for the, the approval through the federal government for the 501(c)(3) status.
Okay. I, I'm gonna feel a lot more comfortable when you get that. We'll, we'll celebrate.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to, did you finish your motion?
I, I think I finished the motion. I think we were just looking for a second.
So what I have is, I have a, I have a motion by Councilmember Pratt to amend the original motion to exclude items three, four, and five of the projects proposed. Is that correct?
That was correct.
And who was support? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to, are we?
Yes.
So the first vote will be on the, the motion to amend. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. And then we're now voting on the original motion as amended. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now I can find the place. Consideration of Parks Commission Bylaws Revision. Each year, the Parks Commission views and approves or recommends revisions to its bylaws. This year, the commission recommended several changes. The city attorney has reviewed and completed the request revisions. At this time, council could take action to approve the update to the Parks Commission bylaws.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
I would like to actually recommend that we table this. When I was looking at the original bylaws for the Parks Commission and then trying to compare them to the new revisions, it, it was a little bit labor intensive. And I really feel like we need a work session to go over all of these changes. There's some of them that I'm, I'm questioning whether they should be made. So I, I, I'm not comfortable even voting on this. I really think it would be worth our while to have a work session on this. And when any commission comes forward to review their bylaws and they want revisions, we probably owe it to the public to have a work session.
So you're making a motion to move it to a work session?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any, just.
I guess I just have a question. So if this gets moved to a work session, is there a timeframe in mind of when that work session might be scheduled? Just since this work has been done, I just, I'm wondering what that timeframe might look like.
I'll defer to, would you like it the sooner the better?
Yeah.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yeah, it, it, you know, they've, they've done a lot of work. It's the sooner the better. But I think the council needs to weigh in and have a work session.
Like our May work session?
Okay.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a role?
To move it to the May work session?
Yes.
And was the second, I'm sorry, was the second by Councilmember Lundberg's? Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Okay, now we will have a report from Sheila Kaminsky on the Alternatives for Area Youth. Is Sheila here?
She's there.
Oh, okay.
They have her stuff together.
I can see her.
Council, your honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 Seems like a long time since I've been standing up here. It's been years. We did
this on Zoom before. So I'm not sure if I covered things or if I left things off or if I didn't. But we started the conversation a while back where we wanted to change the name of the teen center because of people not feeling it was a good thing to be going to the teen center if you're not, you know, little kids, big kids, whatever. So we had a contest. We changed the name to The Rec at Sands Park, which seems to fit and everybody seems to like it, if they can get used to. Still the teen center, will always be the teen center, doesn't matter. It's Manistee and that's the way it is. We do our best to serve all the kids that come there right now. We have about two dozen that show up every day after school, come through, they leave the high school, middle school, and go home. They go by us. So they come in, some stay, some wait for rides, some play, some eat, some, they, sometimes they're there until the end, some, they just come in and go out and come back again. Most of the kids that we have right now are just awesome. They are helpful, they are respectful, they're doing as much as they can to take care of things, I guess, is what I want to say. In the past, we've had some that were not always like that. And it goes up and down. Sometimes there's a whole month where we have nothing but troublemakers and they make it hard for everybody else to play. And luckily, we have Chief Glass come in with some solutions, I guess. We now have a form that we can fill out for those that are truly naughty to not come back. Or they get a visit from a policeman. We've never had that before. All the, I've been there, we've never had that. And the policeman will go and say they aren't allowed there anymore because they can't behave. Well, hopefully we don't get anybody like that, but the potential is there. So we've only used it once. It seems to be a good deterrent. I'd like to tell you about some of the things that have happened. We had a big day of serving recent, in the past year. Bobby Kraus organized a volunteer group to come and the big day of serving people got their groups together and they came and they painted the building. It looks beautiful. It's a, it's a nice bright shade and everything. And it looks clean. And it was an amazing thing to see the kids that turned out to help us and the businesses in Manistee that brought people, you know, to come and do it. Everything was done, cleaned up, and secured by the end of the day before the rain happened. It was very nice. Next thing that happened, the Grabowskis provided us with a shed for the winter gear. That came in a beautiful building setup in the parking lot, matches the teen center paint job, for some reason, just accidentally, but it was nice. It was nice. As far as I know, it holds everything. It holds the skates, it holds the floor, it holds the plastic and all the parts that go to the ice skating rink. And it's all right there so that it can be filled out and put back in a nice, reasonable fashion for everybody. Unfortunately, we didn't get much ice this year. The weather was so weird. We could have had ice this week, I think. We had four days. Jeff opened the rink up on Thursday afternoon and the ice was a little sketchy, but it worked and we had fun. And so Thursday, Friday, the word got out. Saturday, we had at least a hundred people through there. Sunday, we had at least a hundred people through there. And all I could keep telling them was enjoy it now because tomorrow it's gonna rain and it's all gonna be gone. And sure enough, right after that, we never got it back up again. It was just one of those years that went. So it lay there and we fished. Other than that, we have lots of people that use the center. At this point, Rita is still using it for her staircase people. The Center Wellness brings their clients there in the afternoon to play games and give them a place to go. We've been blessed, not only by the Grabowskis, but by the Steelworkers Local fourteen, four forty. They gave us a very generous donation just last week. The Lakeside Club, they gave us a great donation. And the DPW that works tirelessly out there trying to keep everything, you know, in working condition. Other than that, what do I want to tell you? Do you have any more questions?
I was just wondering if you have plans for the donations that you're getting.
Well, there's a couple of things on the wish list. One was we wanted to get a printer, which is what the Lakeside money was going to be for. So we're still looking for our printer for, with that. The money that came from the Steelworkers, they want it all to go for ice skating, obviously, or they don't really care. All they want to know is that we're gonna have ice so we can bring those kids out. That's, that's all they want from us, just to keep doing what we're doing. I asked them, what can we do for you, you know? Keep doing it. So that, that was very nice. There was a couple of things coming up. We need a new popcorn machine because the popcorn machine took a dump. But things that, you know, we need, I don't know. It's up to the board to decide what we need. I just kinda.
Do your thing.
Yeah.
Do you try to recruit at all more peo, more kids, or is it just kind of word of mouth and?
I don't know if we recruit. You mean, just the advertisement of that?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we let, we give them activities to do. They.
Do you feel like the twenty, whenever you said like twenty-four come or something, two dozen?
Oh, yeah. Well, those children are coming right from MHS and, and us going home. So they're mostly just going by. Those are the core that we have. Other than the regular kids that come from the neighborhood, they're there. There's lots of people that just come by and they play softball out there. There's the softball practices. This year, they actually are having games. We have schedule up on the wall and everything. They're gonna, two years, they didn't touch that field. Nothing happened.
I have a question about that. So I had an idea, just because, I mean, there is really not a ton to do, for kids to do in this town. I mean, there's not a lot of resources. So I was thinking, like, if you had, like, the volunteers that would come, like, on a Friday and Saturday night, like, on a Friday night, you'd do, like, eight to ten PM, like, baseball. And then Sa- Saturday night, you could do, like, the skate park open, like, with the lights and music, like, if that would be something.
Sure.
For the kids to do, like, I could see that some people would volunteer just to sit there and, you know, for two hours to.
What night would you like to start?
I absolutely would. I would go.
That'd be great.
Iceball with them because I think it would be fun.
Absolutely.
They probably wouldn't want to play with me, but I, I think it would.
Why not?
So I just, I, I think that where this place is located, it's a great opportunity for.
Oh, it is. And now that they see people out there and there are people taking care of the field, and you see that happening, that gives other people the idea, hey, let's go throw a couple of balls. And guys bring their kids and just, they're out there for an hour, forty-five minutes or whatever. You know, it's, it's a good thing to just have sitting there for them to look at. Let's go do that. That's what they do. That's exactly what they do. If I had a big billboard out there in the front, that's it.
Sheila, I noticed that three or four of the pieces of the skate park have been removed from the park and put up in that tennis court.
Yes.
Can, you need those back. I mean, should we ask the DPW to get those back? They're way too heavy for one park. You don't know how many kids it took to get them up there, but you probably should come back in the skate park.
I have asked. And the kids have brought them back. Some of the kids in the daytime bring them back. And then at nighttime, they.
Those are light. I mean, a painting table must weigh six hundred pounds.
Tell me about it.
So Jeff, can you?
We've moved them several times.
Have you?
I'm ready to anchor them somehow.
It drops the nuts and bolts in them. Okay. Thank you. How many years have you been there?
Twenty.
I didn't ask how old you were. I just want to know how many years you've been.
Twenty.
Thank you very much for your twenty years of service.
Twenty-five, right? Two thousand and twenty-three is exactly twenty.
Thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you.
I just had a question. What can we as a council do to help support your?
Well, give us a chunk of change in the, in the budget. That always helps. That really helps.
So has your budget amount changed or has it typically the same?
As far as I know, since we were last here begging because you were going to cut us out completely and everybody generously pitched in so we didn't have to go under, it's all right. We were very fortunate this year. We're not always fortunate like this to get people to donate, but we try and do fundraisers. We do a little yard sale. We do a little egg sale. We try to do things that will bring in something. But, and the concessions, I, I can't raise the prices anymore. I just can't. So we tend to lose a little bit on that because I can't see having those kids pay more for that food when they're just trying to get out of, you know, get a bite to eat after school. It's not easy for us to shop at the grocery store. They want a snack, give it to them. So if somebody wanted to donate, where would they send their check and who would address it to? Alternatives for Area Youth is the governing body. And I believe on that brochure, which I don't have now, there, there may be a, it's five eighty Maple Street, but the post office box, I believe, is five seventy-one, where our mail goes. Alternatives for Area Youth, AAY, on the back. That's, that's the board that governs me.
Well, we're giving thirteen thousand every year that's in the budget.
Yes, sir.
If somebody's sitting there longer, where are we gonna get the more money to pay the people that are working there? Do they volunteer?
I'm sorry? Tell me again.
People that come in at work when you're not there?
Yeah.
How do you pay them?
Cindy Sheath-Helm works there as well. She makes a salary as well as I do, her hourly wage.
Well, we may have to come up with more money.
There's two of us. There's two of us. We are open forty-eight hours a week. No, that's wrong, twelve. I gotta get it right. We get a forty-eight hour work week paycheck. I get twenty-four hours. Cindy gets twenty-four hours. That's every two weeks. The board members come in and help. They do. They help a lot. We've had very few times when we had to say, sorry, we can't open today. Cindy's elsewhere and I'm sick, or I'm sick and she's elsewhere, or whatever. We've had very few days like that, but it does happen. But we're human, you know, we can't keep. It's just what I wanted to say is that we're only open those four or five hours a day. And that's as much as we can afford to do right now. If we could do more, we would, you know? I put in a couple more hours than my time card says. Everybody does. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Okay, discussion on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Administration has prepared the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget. It was introduced to council and the community at the April fourth, twenty twenty-three council meeting by the finance director. A public hearing to review these budget recommendations and receive public input on them took place earlier in the meeting. In addition to tonight's discussion, a budget study session took place on April eleventh, and a whole study session on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, is scheduled. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty-three meeting. No action is required.
I can, I'll kick off a couple of the items that were brought up last discussion. The DDA maintenance agreement discussion. I, I had a meeting with Chairman Cal Moser about this. I think the real crux of the issue, they did want to kind of start a discussion about the maintenance budget being, maybe they could use that in other more impactful ways. When I first arrived here, one of, we heard about maintenance, about all sorts of places, and the Riverwalk and the streetscape were. of places, and the Riverwalk and the Streetscape were kind of the primary ones. So my goal was to get a grant for the, the Riverwalk, and we were able to get that. If we can get a grant for the Streetscape, that would be great, too. But we, we were able to do an RFP and get that process started. So I'm, once we, I think we have some older assets in the community, it's time, I mean, I think that Streetscape's over twenty years old at this point, Jeff?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So it's, it's time, and it's going to be an exciting process, where they're going to look at what other amenities can we add? What, you know, we're going to have a, a road, but also, I mean, we have some nice things there, like the limestone, you know, knee walls, and, and we have the light fixtures. But, you know, can, will there be, you know, a public fireplace like they have in, in certain areas? So we, I think those are kind of the discussions they want to have, and I think having some joint meetings with the DDA in the future, I think are a good way to, to go about this. So bottom line, there was a letter I sent out to council this afternoon. The main point was they agreed, they're going to honor the existing contract. It's going to serve, they're going to serve their one hundred eighty-day notice with that letter to be in effect June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We're going to start discussions about a new agreement, and hopefully, we plan to have one before, probably the middle, maybe January timeline. That's what we're looking to do. So want to give council, does anyone have any questions about that?
So they're going to revise their budget, then?
So I sent over, they did make an A and a B budget. I sent that over this afternoon. The B budget is the one with the, with the, with the, with the agreement money in it, the service agreement money.
Okay.
So that'll be the recommended budget to approve. The other big discussion topic was the community development, planning zoning administrator. So I don't want to take any way, I know Mike's here, and so is Katie. They've done an excellent job. I just think contracting out a position like this, I think it's a great thing to have in the county for coordination. But we are the biggest city in the county, and I think it's a disservice for us not to have our own department for this. And there's a sense, contracting out, you can only get so specific about things when the environment changes. And I just, I think it's, it's something that we need in the city. And I know my plate's full. A lot of other department heads' plates are full, and I think we need to add some senior level staff to deal with a lot of the growth issues we're dealing with. And I think it's an exciting thing when we're growing. But then, coming from bigger cities, I just see where we're going to be limited. I think we did a lot of things with contracting out, but you see where we're kind of getting into, we run into issues with having so many things contracted out. I think, I sent out, the email today also described some ideas if we did bring building inspection in-house, a building official, and rental in-house under that department. So I think there's some ways we can do things, and it's needed. But I'm willing to discuss it further if anyone would like to.
So I guess, oh, go ahead. I have a question. So, and maybe it's just based on what you just said. I'm not sure. So the community development and county, or county contract, I guess, is that only for zoning and planning work, or, because you just kind of said that your plate's full and other supervisors' plates are full. So is this going to be kind of a catch-all position, where if somebody's busy, then it's going to get passed over to this person?
No, not necessarily. It's, it's just, it's going to be that defined scope, and I plan to get a, a job description. I can get that out.
Can we see that before we approve the budget? Because the no, not necessarily kind of leads me to believe that it's not really an etched-in-stone position on what those expectations are. I mean, if, if we're saying we need extra help because people are overloaded, that's one thing. But I think it has to be an accurate depiction of what the need is for versus this is what we want, but then they're going to kind of have their hand in everybody else's area, too.
Yeah. So we'll get a job description.
I'd appreciate that.
You want a job description before we pass the budget?
Well, I guess, so it says zoning and planning, that's one thing. And I think our questions were based on zoning and planning last time. And I agree with what Councilmember Beaton said, you know, that's something to consider when we bring that back in-house, if that's what we agreed to do, is are we going to be putting a lot on one person's plate? And is that, are those supports built in? Because I think the last thing we want to do is put a position in place that hasn't got the supports around it, so that person doesn't feel supported and successful. Because nobody is going to agree to stay if they don't have those supports. That's not setting that individual up, or us as a community up, for success. So I guess we wanted a little bit more, but now, off of what was just said, and kind of what was alluded to in some areas of the budget, I'm wondering if it's not just zoning and planning. Like, if we need something else, then maybe it's, this person's doing zoning and planning half of the time, and they're doing something else half of the time. I mean, what does that look like?
I didn't, I didn't read it was planning, zoning, and building inspection and rental all for the same person. Is it, that's not how you?
No, no, it would be.
Two different spots.
Two people. And we also do have administrative services down in the main floor that can assist with mailings and things like that. So it's not, I think we do end up touching other things. It's not, I mean, we try to keep a definition of what the core of a person's job is for, kind of department heads. But I think a lot of times, it is, it is kind of like assisting and.
Yeah, I wasn't taking it like the building and rental, but when you said your plate's full and other supervisors' plates are full, I kind of took it like, is that person then going to be handling things from other supervisors? What does that look like? You know, is it a split position?
The other, I'll go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just read that to say is, his plate's full, and we can't cancel the planning and zoning and put it on his plate. We need the person to do that, is what I read that as. But maybe I misread that.
That's, that's what I thought, too. Yeah.
That's, that's, is that what you meant? You didn't mean, you bring planning and zoning and dump all your stuff on planning and zoning? You want planning and zoning to take all planning and zoning? But there may be some capacity in there for.
Well, I think, and the other thing is, there's things that might slip through the cracks that aren't covered in a contract that end up coming onto my desk, which, that's just the reality of it. But, and I think having it in-house, where, or something where it's not a contract, kind of would be a better way to go about a position like this, where it's ever-changing. And there's, there's just, we have, you know, new mishda money coming down. You know, it, it would typically be handled by, you know, we, I think Housing North's been effective at working with us, but we're going to need to, we need to be able to go after these funds and.
So if we cancel that contract, when will that date be?
So it's up till October, or September thirtieth, I believe.
So we don't necessarily need to have it right away.
So that's, and we are having this discussion with the budget. Just because there's a contract obligation coming up. They want to change the terms of it. So it is something to see if, if we're interested in, you know.
It gives you time to develop that job description and blah, 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 blah. So.
Yes.
Okay.
Here's my concern. And I just, I, I think I would feel sorry for a person that was working, you know, from eight to five, and then they're, it's my understanding that they would have to attend other meetings at night that the city has, or during the day, like the historical commission, the planning commission. I don't know if there's any other commissions they need to attend, but they, they may be called in to do that. You're asking somebody to work day and night. I just want to make sure that they don't get burned out, and that they don't take on more than they can handle. Because I, I want to believe that the support is there, but maybe it's only there from five, you know, from eight to five. I don't know. So this is my concern. I do not want to take a really good person off the street and then put them in a position, I want to set them up for, for success.
As do I. I agree. And we do have multiple, I think Jeff's on the tree commission, the parks commission. So a lot of people are on multiple commissions. So it's not, and I understand what you're saying, but that is kind of, that's the job to some degree.
And you make that a salary, your hourly wage, really, as to how you put that job together. That's how you, how we look at it.
Right.
I, I'm in favor of adding the two full-time positions for the planning and zoning and the rental inspection to be in-house. I think that's going to clear up a lot of our issues that we've had.
I would agree with that.
So with the rental thing, I had a question. Last meeting, I mean, I agree if we can bring that in-house. I mean, even if we can, which might not be easy, but if we can bring building and rentals in, even if they didn't make a profit off of those, but just broke even, I feel like that's a huge service to provide to residents and the community. So from my understanding, it's an eighty-twenty split now, with SafeBill, that they take eighty percent, we get twenty. And you said our twenty percent, or I think Ed might have said it, that the twenty percent ended up being like forty thousand?
Yeah.
Right? Okay. So where does that money go right now in the contract? Because you kind of mentioned that it was like an admin account, but I guess, what are we using that for? Like, because if that's twenty percent is forty thousand, if we recouped a hundred percent of that, could it pay for those two positions?
So I'll just point out that, and Ed can come up with, so the rental is a hundred percent pass-through currently with SafeBill, so we would take all that in. We would still, in terms of the trades, like plumbing, electrical, we're not going to hire on all those trades. So we, we, and I think if we did change from SafeBill to, the state takes a hundred percent, so we wouldn't make that money. So we'd have to see if McKenna would come with a better option, too, if that would be a thirty or a thirty-seventy split, or an eighty-twenty again. So that's the one we wouldn't recoup. But, Ed, do you have anything to add with that?
The memo that the city manager sent out late today, at the second page, it's got a sources and uses. And keep in mind, right now, the city gets twenty percent of all the permits. If we were to take that building inspection permission in-house, or a position in-house, we'd get a hundred percent of the building inspection fees, and we'd get zero percent of the rental inspection if, if we went with the state. So the numbers aren't apples to apples, but we've penciled in around forty thousand would be what we would generate in build, just building permit income if we were to go with these two positions. So that sources and uses chart that's in that document that the city manager sent around shows that it's basically being break even for the two positions. So it's a net, zero net impact on the budget. It could potentially be positive, because it's pretty conservative, the numbers I have on there.
But we would get the rental inspection fee?
Yes, that's part of the stream that would pay for, pay for those positions.
Okay.
Yep.
And the other, the trade-off here, too, was we were proposing, we had an assistant for the building facilities, a part-time position. In the budget, we also proposed a parks employee. So I think there's some, you know, I think Reeds Parks Bathroom needs a new roof. My, my hope is that we can coordinate more with that parks employee to work with Mark Hanson to kind of do some of these other projects, too. So kind of thinking about how we can make all this work, and that was one of the items.
So you would eliminate that part-time? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yes.
Ed, how many people do you supervise?
Councilmember Gorbowski, the way we're structured right now, some of the financial duties are split across both the clerk and the treasurer's department. So, for example, Heather, the city clerk, I don't supervise her directly. She reports to the city manager and to city council. But when she does accounts payable functions, that's an area that I get involved with. Kaylee Owens, who's the utility billing and accounts receivable clerk, is all under my auspices, although she helps out with elections. She's an election inspector, and she's doing that role. She reports to Heather. Laura Lorraine, who's the deputy clerk, primarily reports to Heather, but she does payroll, and she answers to me under payroll. So depends on how you look at it, because we're kind of a hybrid department. Beyond that, I also oversee Molly, who's the assessor. I oversee our IT contractor. I oversee Mark Hanson. And I also, there's one other one. Oh, I'm also the, the Brownfield administrator, so I oversee the Brownfield consultant.
One thing I want to ask you, I asked you last time, is for three years in a row, we took in a hundred thousand dollars, and, and to everybody, the police, fire, and city park, or city garage, we put in whatever money's over to them. And then we come back there and we ask for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand for a truck. Did some of that money come out of that motor pool fund to pay for this truck?
Yeah, all of it did. So when you approved that purchase, it was being purchased by the motor pool. So the funds that each department sends to the motor pool pay for that truck. And we schedule out the motor pool over a ten-year period and estimate all the revenues and expenses. What the motor pool does, Councilmember Gorbowski, is that it acts as a buffer, so that the departmental budgets aren't slammed with big increases up and down every year. The motor pool absorbs those fluctuations. So if you have a piece of equipment that breaks, it has the capacity to pay for that, or if you have inflation, or if things are delayed, it, it just retains those assets and lets them build. So it acts as a shock absorber in the budget, and it's worked out very well. And we do, we do do a ten-year projection to make sure it can stay solvent.
Okay. Because when I was going through that, I had to go way over to some other budget to come back and kind of trace this hundred thousand down the line. And it was hard. I mean, these budgets are easy to read.
No, that, it's the nature of municipal budgeting, unfortunately.
I know, you're going to read them, so.
I, I tried to include some narrative to help explain it, but there's, there's a lot there.
So that's what I was interested in. I forgot. I don't even know what that.
I have a quick question. So you said that you oversee Laura?
When she's doing payroll.
So then Heather oversees her at the other part-time? But Heather says payroll, too.
Heather says payroll. I should have said accounts payable. If it says payroll, it's probably a typo.
Okay.
It says accounts payable.
Okay.
No, Jeff, are we getting the sewer camera next year? I see in the two thousand twenty-four budget that we have it on the budget to purchase it next year.
So just a little bit of history on this. Quite a few years ago, probably eight, nine years ago, we had budgeted, or I had requested money to fund a sewer camera purchase. However, in two thousand fifteen, we were, we started the Saw Grant, and part of the Saw Grant was we were going to televise eighty percent of the sanitary sewers in the community and, and have a, have all that information, and that was contracted and paid for by the grant. So we did not purchase the camera for that reason. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, that data became available, and we use it literally every day. I have felt for the past several years that the purchase of a camera was not necessary, and that we had a contractor in town that we could reach out to when necessary. We just did it yesterday, in fact. However, I've been encouraged by several council members to purchase that camera. And now that we're five years, that the data that we've got is five years old, in discussions with the city manager, I feel that it's probably worthwhile to, to have that capacity and refresh some of those videos. And then we also have the twenty percent of items that we don't have catalogued that we could in the future.
But that's what we've been arguing for, for a few years now.
I concede.
I felt that way about body cameras seven years ago, too, but not anymore.
Right.
Life goes on.
Right.
It can get better.
Well, and, and the technology's improved, and we use that, that data so much, and it's really, it's really actually helpful when you've got a customer that comes in and has, doesn't understand it, and you're able to show them visuals of it. And so I've been
I had a question in regards to the attorney budget. How does the city select their attorney?
So usually through an RFQ process. I don't know when the last time that was. We've been the city attorney for a long time, I think.
Nineteen ninety-something.
And a lot of times with municipal attorneys, just kind of the, the knowledge of how the city works is, is very important.
Right. I, I guess, I was just a little surprised by the amount there. I was just wondering if it might be worth in the future, kind of looking at what options are out there. Nothing against Micah Myers or Mr. Saylor. I'm just wondering what, what's out there for other options for legal advice.
Well, I had a question on the Ramsdale, like I always do, but Ed left the room, so.
You just wanted to get a charging cord.
Oh, okay.
I like to know, is that fifty thousand to paint those pillars, to scrape them and?
You wanted to get a charging cord.
I know. You know, a lot of that. I want to put you on the hot seat.
Well, that's, that's project.
Anybody else? I heard we're waiting for Ed. He may ask online or there.
Well, this might be an Ed question while we're waiting, but I guess I'll just put it out there, and you can let me know if it would be. Is the third, okay, so it seems like Alternatives for Area Youth Rec Center, Youth Center, their budget, a thirteen thousand? center, their budget of $13,000 seems remarkably low in my mind. I'm, I'm really shocked that that's all that the city contributes to that. And I'm quite impressed with what they provide for $13,000. I guess I'm just wondering, is there a way we can look at providing them with some more funding?
I think, Linda, isn't that we, that's what we all put in for, 13,000?
We put in for that because we're afraid if we ask for more, then people get nothing.
So Ed, I got a question about the Ramsdale, of course. So I'm still confused on this 50,000, because the 50,000 is to pay for maintenance and utilities, right?
Let me see if I can try to clarify what's going on. So, the appropriation that goes to any of these organizations is really unrestricted. What I've tried to present to council is that that amount of money, if you look at the year-over-year expenses in the Ramsdale Theater, covers those line items. So it's kind of a baseline. So, you know, you've got so much in utilities, you've got repairs and maintenance, and that adds up to greater than 50,000. That's one way of thinking about where that money goes.
Okay. So my concern with the Ramsdale is, I don't understand why they can't be self-sustaining. Like, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know if, something is missing there to where I would rather take this 50,000 and split it up between the MRA, the rec center, and the museum. Like, I don't understand, like, I think there's something wrong with the board, the way that it's run. They should be, as many years as they've been in business, be able to sustain it themselves when we're doing the maintenance and we're paying the utilities. Like, I don't.
Well, it, it is sustainable with that 50,000. Without the 50,000, I think it would fold.
How is that possible, though? Because the Vogue-
Well, if they let me explain. Nationwide, nonprofit arts organizations don't survive without, generally. There's exceptions, like the Detroit Art Institute and bigger organizations, but smaller nonprofits in the arts, they don't survive without public support, and there's documented studies of that. So the 50,000, you know, it's, it's a, it's a percentage of our budget, maybe 20%, maybe a little bit less, depending on what activities go on there. But it's, it's core to be able to have that funding and be able to build on that with ticket sales, with donations, with sponsorships, and that sort of things. But you're, you're never going to get to the point where you're going to raise all of that in this, in this area with donations. And part of our problem and our challenge is, we've got Lake Michigan as a favor.
But how is that possible? Because the Vogue does it. The Vogue runs on donations. Like, they don't get 20%.
And they have, they have a lot, they have volunteers, and they have, they have movies 365 days a year where the Ramsdale does them.
But that's not true either, because they're closed on Sundays and Mondays.
Okay, so they have it 365.
But they're only-
They used to be seven days a week.
But they're only two theaters. And they charge, what, $5, $6 a ticket? When you go to a gala at the Ramsdale, you're paying $120 a person, so, and they have a lot more than just movies like the Vogue does. They have all kinds of activities. They have people coming in there renting the spaces. So I, I don't understand, I, I'm going to argue this to the death, because-
Okay.
They should be, their board should want to be self-sustaining. Like, they, that should be their goal. And they, every time they put in here, well, we can't do that. Like, they're already setting themselves up for failure, and I don't understand that.
I, I think it is their goal, and if you look in the back of the budget, I don't know if it's in there this year or not, I may have taken it out, but the amount of city support has gone down and declined considerably over the last number of years. You know, I don't have any board members here, unfortunately, but I, I think they would uniformly agree that, you know, they're out there raising funds, they're, they're trying to do what the community wants, they're trying to put on, you know, educational things and a variety of programming, but some of that program doesn't make money.
But you also have people leaving them money in their estates and, you know.
Yeah, there is some of that, but it all, you know, it's all, the, the budget's transparent, and all of our 990s are on our website. I don't know what the Vogue Theater's budget is. I've never looked at it or seen it. I probably could go out and see, but I suspect it looks quite a bit different than our budget, just in terms of their, their cost structures. So I don't-
I just, I think that they should put their, structure their board so they are looking at being self-sustaining, because every year they put in here, we can't do it without this 50,000. So are we actually paying their utilities, maintenance, and giving them 50,000?
No. When I say it pays for that, it, it covers, it covers those expenses. The city pays it because we keep the Ramsdale Theater's books. So, so the city, through the Ramsdale Theater's segregated funds, pays those utilities. The, the funds that the city gives to the Ramsdale become part of those segregated funds. If that, you know.
We pay the utilities on other city-owned buildings?
We pay all the city bills, and we pay the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts bills.
Okay. So then why is this one the only one that needs the appropriations?
We're the only nonprofit besides the other people like AAY and the Historical Museum. And I'm sure, as an example, if you look at the Historical Museum budget, we give them, whatever it is, 11,500. If you look at what their budget is, it, if they use that money to pay for certain items, whatever it is in their budget, not, not any different than the Ramsdale Theater. The Ramsdale Theater just has a bigger budget.
So I have a question about the budget with that, and I'm just wondering, because you kind of sit on that board and communicate with them, if you could provide some insight. So is there a way, maybe they already do it this way, because, like, the mayor said you can rent, you know, the Ramsdale for different events. So is there a way that we could establish something where, for example, the rate is different for people that are renting it from out of town versus if you're a resident in the city and you're already paying some tax, you know, you're paying tax dollars? Because essentially, some of your tax money's already going to the Ramsdale. So I'm just wondering if there was a way that, you know, if residents in the city wanted to have their wedding reception there, they could get a, a little break on what the regular price is. You know, it might be rented more often, and that might be a go-to for some people, because that is one thing I've heard from citizens. They're kind of like, you know, people don't have an issue of funding, or, you know, contributing to that. Everybody loves the Ramsdale, sees the historical importance, the need of that, but they're like, you know, our tax dollars are going to it, and if I wanted to have my wedding reception there costs this much, so I looked at other venues that were maybe less expensive. So I just wonder, like, the high school does that with the pool? If you're not a citizen in the city, you pay a different amount versus if you live in the city? I just wonder if there's a way to set that up?
Potentially, the board would have to discuss that.
Yeah.
We'll say for most of the rentals that are there, if it's not somebody renting the theater to put on their own production. For example, the Petersons, that the West York Community College put on, that was a straight rental.
Yeah.
We didn't do a split-ticket deal with them or anything. So that's an example, where they just rented, they provided everything. Sometimes we do that differently. But like, the ballroom is where the, primarily the rentals are. And we've tried to position that between, say, like, the Lion's Den or the VFW Hall, and then some of the more expensive venues like Frog Pond and the Casino and stuff. So we tried to be that sweet spot, and that seems to have worked pretty well. If there's a desire to look at a, a citizen rate, we'd have to think about that, see what that would, kind, would mean. You know, maybe we leave the rates the same and raise them for non-residents. I don't know. You know, that, that amount, the money that we get when we do these rentals is very helpful to support the budget, because it's, it's very profitable, right? But there's a way you could look at that and see, and the board could certainly discuss that.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my thought behind that wasn't necessarily lowering, lowering the amount from what it is now, but maybe there should be a price discrepancy for citizens in the city versus people that are outside.
Sure. It gets a little complicated, because now I have a daughter who doesn't live in the city anymore, who's getting married, but they want to come back to the Ramsdale, either a resident or not.
Well, she's also not paying tax dollars.
You've got those issues, though, but if, but the, but the parent might still live in the city and be paying for the wedding. So you'd have, you know, there, it's, it's going to be challenging to set up that policy, but I'll certainly bring it up with the board and suggest it.
So can you do that, or can you ask, how would, who would I contact about reaching that?
No, I can take that to the board and let them know.
And then you'll follow back up?
Yep.
I think we have a word with their contract, too, they're coming in.
Oh, I didn't know if that was on the schedule yet. I knew we had talked about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it's coming up, but I-
All right, we can bring it up then.
We have it on the third, it's on May 3rd, I believe, so.
Did you get your question answered about the pillars?
No.
I think council member, or mayor-
Who was the pillars?
Yeah.
So we finally got the architect from Spicer to come up and evaluate them. So that's going to happen in a couple weeks, and then he's going to write up a scope of work, and then we'll get that work bit out, get those repaired.
Didn't we, are we done with the lead and the pipes? That Eagle is working on that, and I thought we were pretty close to getting done with all that.
Yeah, it's called the DWAM, the Drinking Water Asset Management Grant from Eagle. What that grant paid for was a statistical analysis of the water services in the city, and how many of those are believed to be lead. So it's not a 100% check on every water service, but based on the number of services that we have, they required a, a sampling at random, and then we contracted out a company to come and hydroesate each of those samples. And then from that, we've got a model and a statistical analysis of how many suspected lead services we have. And then from that, then the city has to replace a percentage of those every year for a number of years. All of that, all of that future work has been included in the capital improvement program for the water department, and has been inputted into the rate study as part of the water rate analysis.
I thought we were getting done with that, though.
Yeah, we, honestly, we don't have that many lead services. We've found several galv, or lead ooshnecks, but the services, for the most part, probably in the 95% are, are not, contain no lead. The way that the city is proceeding with this is super, I would say, super aggressive. We are assuming that if there's a galvanized line, we want to replace it, whether it's got a lead component or not. And so when we're submitting this stuff, and, and the way that we've built the program is, we want to get every service in the city to have copper services, and we've been budgeting for that.
Look at these sidewalks, Jeff. I thought that years ago, I remember when they gave 10%, it was supposed to be done every year. Did we not do them for a few years or something, that we're still looking for the crack sidewalks and all that?
I'm not sure what the 10% is. There's a percentage of the Act 51 money that we're required to spend on sidewalk improvements each year, and, and that's looked at over a period of time. Ed and I go through that Act 51 report and submit it to the state every year, and we're well above what our, our state obligation is. We just had actually a follow-up, and, and I'd be happy to, usually I talk about this when I do my annual report. Last year, we improved, I'm going to give you rough numbers, about 220, we, we saw cut, or did the beveling, on about 220 trip hazards in the city. So that cost us about just under $15,000. If you extrapolate that out and assume that you have to replace both slabs, that would be well over $100,000, up to $200,000, based on today's prices. So that's the first thing that we're doing, is, is we're working through the entire city and making a sweep, and trying to do that saw cutting and every trip hazard we have. And then the DPW crews are following that work up, and then doing the ones that don't qualify, and then doing the replacements. And we've got that budgeted every year.
I think you'd have to go back 20-some years to get 10%.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. I, I could tell you that we've got the entire north side complete with that process. We've got from Maple Street West, we've got everything but Sixth Street and Pine Street, which we plan to do this fall, and we'll have that completely done. And then we're going to start on the city between 31 and Maple, and really about Philer Street, and then we're going to head, head south all the way to the city limits. Then we'll start down by the peninsula, and we'll get through Maxwell Town will be the next section.
I know there's two bad ones on Eighth, between Seventh and Eighth Street. There's two bad ones.
Yeah, there is a section on Eighth Street, yep. There's one, I think it's the, the south side of Eighth Street up to the church that we still have to do, too. But we were just reviewing that with our contractor earlier today.
I see you got 40,000 for that, put in.
Yep. One of the things that, in our discussion, we seen, we, we told the contractor, it seems like we were making good geographical process or progress, and then it seemed like we, we slowed. And he went back through the records and said, "Well, you had us do the whole River Walk." And that ate up almost a year's, where the funds just on the River Walk. And I know a lot of you guys walked that, you could see it. I think it was necessary, so.
I know, when are you, did you actually complete the work that was done between Maple and 31? Say, south of First Street? There's some bad ones just around Second Street.
Yeah, that, that's the next section.
Because I tripped on them within the last week, and I thought, oh, man, I got to remember where this, this point is, because it's bad.
Yeah.
And it wasn't just one, you know, crack where it was bad. There were several in a row that were bad.
Yeah, that's our next seg, segment to attack.
So I think with that, though, I mean, I could be wrong, because I've heard it from many community members, there might be a miscommunication, because some people are thinking that if their sidewalks aren't level, in order to get that taken care of, they have to pay for that?
I will defer to the city attorney.
I'm not-
I've interpreted ordinance before.
I'm not sure how that works, but I can tell you, like, I agree with Linda, you know, when I was out walking right by Jefferson School, so I have to leave kids and parents. Like, there's one, I mean, it's a huge tripping hazard. It's not been leveled, but somebody has spray painted on it to draw your attention, but you'd have to be walking, looking down on the sidewalk to see it.
Is that on L Street or Bryant or Bryant, where that?
Um, it's Bryant.
Tom Bryant.
Like, right.
By the buses?
Well, I don't know if buses pick up there.
Yes.
But there's that house right there, and it's right there. And I mean, numerous times, if I'm, you know, talking on the phone, walking, and I'm not paying attention, you, it's noticeable.
And I'm chewing gum while I walk, too.
Yeah, there's this much of a difference, so. But I've mentioned that to citizens, like Colin, they're like, well, we've been told that we have to pay for that service if we want that done now.
So I think that's in the, the group of work that we're going to complete this year. I want, I want George to be able to, to say, but I believe the ordinance does require residents, or places the responsibility on sidewalk repair with the residents. However, in practice, the DPW has come up with a program, and we're clearing to, 200 to 250 trip hazards a year. We've got probably 90-plus miles of sidewalks, so it takes time to get through that all.
You're clearing those without the homeowner assisting in that project, right?
Right.
And so, but if the homeowner calls and says, "I want this done," you have them help you, but if you choose it yourself, you're not billing the homeowner. Is that how it's been in the past?
So, many years ago, the, the way the program worked was, residents called and said, "I've got a, a bad sidewalk in front of my house." It got put on the list, and then the city would hire a contractor, and they would go all over town. And what we've tried to do is make that much more efficient, as opposed to running all over the town and it raised the costs so high. We're trying to get everything together and make a sweep and go through the entire city and eliminate all the trip hazards at once.
My question, if you choose to replace a sidewalk, you pay the full cost?
Correct.
In your project. But if that resident's calling and says, "Man, you didn't choose to replace this one this year, but I'd get it done," they carry half the cost?
Yes, we do, we have started that, I think that was suggested by Councilman Grabowski's a couple years ago, that we will-
You win the Sidewalk Lotto, you get it done for free, but if you don't win it, you got to pay for half.
As opposed to the way the actual local law is written, which is, yeah.
I can see where, there are some that are very bad, didn't get, didn't get picked and been replaced, and there's some that are less bad that got replaced for free. I just, yeah, it's just a priority, priority issue with it, some, there's inherently not a fair price.
Yeah, and when we started the program, it was kind of a pilot program of, we would contribute half, and if the owner contributed half, and we would add that on to the annual work. The problem was, we couldn't get contractors to fulfill that, and I haven't had any requests anyway, so. So honestly, I've been rolling those funds in to, to the trip hazards, if we get to that point, and just trying to clear and clean up as much as we can.
Anything else? You good? Okay. No? Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters to council will not be publicly read. Sir?
Quick question. What's the update on Northern Hotel?
So it's just a time for you to comment? Like, we're, we'll get you that answer if that's your comment?
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Other department head?
Just one update. Work at, down at First Street Beach is going extremely well and very quickly. We expect to have some concrete poured this week, and paving is tentatively scheduled for next week, which is earlier than what their original schedule was, so.
Is it concrete gutters, curbs?
There are, there's a couple sidewalks, there's a couple sections of curb. Most of it is just a little bit east and a little bit west of the end of First Street to control erosion to the, to the, I'm sorry, to the north. To the south, along the frontage from the hotel, I expect a lot of pedestrian traffic, and so we're putting a stretch of curb in there, just to control and contain the, the traffic and keep people from parking along those sides.
In that spot where all the water comes off of the parking lot there, to the north of that corner?
Yep.
Is that manhole being replaced or fixed so that water will drain better and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. If you drove, if you drove into the big parking lot, you could see the tops off of it, and it's being modified to improve that. So I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Chief Cameron.
I'll try and keep this as short as possible. It's been an honor, this is my last meeting. It's been an honor working for the city. I thank all of you for your support, and as well as councils in the past and all the prior chiefs. Each department's been great to work with, DPW and the Felice, pretty, they've been pretty good, they've been really good working together. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank all the citizens of this community for allowing me to be here for this period of time. Also, the guys in the firehouse, this position isn't, it's only one position, so without them, on their day-to-day grind, it wouldn't be anything, so. And I'll take a minute to thank my wife. She's put up with me for thirty-four total years of this pager-beeping and chaos that I've been running around, so I'm going to pay her back, spending a lot of time with her. So, thank you again.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, well.
So while you're up here, I'm going to, I'm going to go first. So resolution of thanks and appreciation, Mark Cameron. Whereas Mark Cameron began his career with the City of Manistee on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and three, as firefighter, and whereas during the tenure, Mark demonstrated outstanding capabilities, initiative, and professionalism in the execution of his many duties and responsibilities. And whereas Mark would diligently raise, rising through the ranks, being promoted to driver engineer in September two thousand and seven, to captain in July twenty twenty twelve, to temporary duty fire chief in August two thousand and nineteen, and finally, fire chief in July of two thousand and twenty. Motivated, motivated by true heart for community and service. And whereas Mark, as fire chief, Mark stretched and grew his supervisory abilities, inspiring the fire department to continue to do their best work for Manistee's community. And whereas Mark will remain a great friend to the employees of the City of Manistee, and whereas Mark Cameron has served the City of Manistee with pride, dedication, integrity since September tw- two thousand and three, completing nearly twenty years of service to the community, now therefore be it. Resolved that on behalf of the City of Manistee Council and the citizens of this community, we give thanks and appreciation to Mark Cameron for his loyal service to the community and congratulate him on his retirement as of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Further saith, not this resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pratt.
I just had a question, since we talked about sidewalks. I was just wondering, you know, since the weather's kind of gotten nice for a little while, let's hope it maybe is past with the snow in the past couple of days, but just roads and street repair, I'm just wondering what that process is going to look like? Not, not talking about whole roads or whole streets, but patching or like a skim coat or something in some areas, like the street there by the post office is pretty bad, like you go to get out of your car, and I'm afraid somebody is going to, like, take a tumble. I mean, it's between the curb and that, like, when you would step out, some of that is, like, disintegrated beyond belief. So I'm just wondering what that's going to look like, and if residents should call if their streets have some concerns, or if the city, because I know you said, right now, we have some extra help with the bridge tenders not going back. Is there a process in place that the city's going to go around and look at street conditions?
So at this point, our basic maintenance includes several items, but pothole patching, typically after a rain event, the roads start to pop and we get pavement dislodging, we'll send out the patch crew. And then throughout the year, as we start getting complaints or as we start noticing that we need to get out, we'll go out, especially if there's specific targeted areas. I put a note down for Filer Street. We will do a full street sweep of the community pretty soon. We also, at this point in the year, start to clean catch basins with sand, and that helps to keep the debris out of the, out of the lakes and stuff. And then we are also tentatively planning to do crack sealing this spring. We have a tremendous list of stuff, and we've committed a lot of our resources to match grants and, and do volunteer projects and stuff. So there's a, there's a chance I may have to move that to fall, but during the season, we will be doing crack sealing as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I had recently went on a tour of the house on Concord Street. I wanted to thank you for setting that up. I guess I'm, I've got a little bit of concern there, not with the structure necessarily itself, but it, since it's sitting vacant, it seems like it'd be an opportune time to maybe make some improvements or things like that. I guess my concern was, when I went through it, personally, I don't know that I would choose to live there, or that if that was a property I owned, that I would choose to allow somebody else to live there in that condition. It, it looks like it could just use a really good deep clean. And I guess I have a issue, I, I wouldn't choose to allow somebody to live in a house I wouldn't be willing to live in myself, and I think that's maybe the lens we should look at things through. I appreciate the opportunity to go through that. I would like the opportunity to go through Century Terrace, and I think that would be valuable for council to have that opportunity if they chose to, because I, I really think when we're talking about the Housing Commission and people that count on that, we really have to understand what those individuals are living in and what they're being subjected to and what's available, because those are all things that we have some influence on. So I, I'd like to be able to, to do that, if we could arrange that.
I can bring it up to the, the Housing Commission. I know Harborview oversees Century Terrace and Riverside, so ultimately, they're the ones who are responsible for allowing that. I mean, I can, I can request it, as you can, but we can, I can talk to the chair, but ultimately, it is their, their property.
I did talk to somebody on the Housing Commission, and I, I want to make sure that everybody knows I'm very appreciative, as I think other people are, but I don't want to speak for other people. The hard work and hard decisions that the Housing Commission is making right now, and I think those are all steps in the right direction, but there's still room to go, and I'm confident that they're going to get us there, and, and that, you know, it's just something that takes time. But having had the opportunity to go through that, I feel like that's something that I needed to voice, just because I think what's right is right. Aside from that, I just want to thank Sheila and Linda from the Rec Center for the hard work that they do, and Cindy, that's a great asset to the community. I want to thank the Parks Commission and Manistee Proud for identifying areas of need within our community and stepping up to not only complain, or not complain, mention those, but also be willing to put forth the hard effort, work, and determination to see those projects done. So thank you.
Mr. Grabowski.
Bill, I'll be meeting with one of the, our, the Century Terrace people tomorrow morning. I can ask them and see, because I heard once that the resident there didn't really want anybody going through there, right now with all the construction going on, but I'll find out. There's three homes I'd like to bring up, and I know my wife's going to bring them up to the Restoration Light Committee. One's at Militzer in Fourth Avenue, it's a tarp on the roof, it's an old house, nobody's living there, and it's been like that for a while. Seventh and High, that home has been boarded up for quite a while. And Fifth in, in the street off of Ramsgill, between two twenty-one and two thirty-five, is boarded up, I mean, there's no way anybody's going to get in the place. I don't know if we can get somebody to take over that project and, and clear them out or do something with it.
Can we take a note of those council members, or, or make sure I blow out officers? I don't know specifically those addresses, but I want to make sure officers are aware of it. Last week and this week, they're updating their.
Could you read my reading?
We'll, we'll take a look at it, and we'll circle back with you.
Yeah, there, there, thanks, Jim.
Just want to thank Mark for all the years of service. You're going to leave a big, big void, so.
Back.
Well, thank you.
I just want to let council know that I participated in a cleanup on First Beach, and that was around April sixth, the weekend, with about nineteen other people. It was quite successful. It was in collaboration with the Great Lakes Environmental Festival, that's taking place on April twenty-second. They're going to have a display of the items we found on the beach. I think it's worth your while to take a look at it. There's a good crew to work with. There's so much going on right now. I do feel like, I, I want to echo Mr. Pratt's comments. I do think the Housing Commission, I've been keeping a close eye on the, the meetings, I think they're doing a tremendous job. They're moving in the right direction. I'm encouraged. So I think that's all positive on behalf of the residents. So that being said, I think that's all I really need to say right now.
Thank you. Slumber.
I just want to check in and see how that see, click, fix thing is going? Have we heard, have you gotten any?
So we, yeah, I think, you know, when Councilmember Pratt brought up potholes, I was thinking, that's a great, yeah, if you see one, obviously, the DPW, and when we see them, we report them, but if, if you see one, please take a picture, send it, it's, it's very helpful to have it documented, it kind of goes right to the, the group that works on it. So if you haven't downloaded it, I recommend downloading it. You can also access it through the website, which I think the, taking this opportunity to, to show you. But it's location-specific, you just kind of click on it and, and also, we have a new revamped website, website, too, so.
It did look nice.
Check that out. So you, on the, you see the, on the right side, see, click, fix, you can go there, scroll down.
These are all the things that people requested, or?
Well, you can request, yep, and then if you keep going down, keep going, keep going. So this is where you kind of put a little.
Sidewalk damage is on there, too.
You put a little new request in. So that's interactive right there, you click on that, add a, place your little pin wherever the, the item is, you can also add the address on the top. So kind of move forward to the, so if you were to, if you were to move that cursor.
And then what happens is, is that gets seen by staff, and you guys decide who's going to take care of it, kind of?
It goes to them, and then it's kind of, it gets escalated, and, yeah, it's in the queue to be worked on. So, so there you kind of have the different items you can request. So say, blight, and I, I'm not going to go all the way through, because it's not fair with, but if you had a photo here, and you could do this through your phone, which is very convenient, a lot of people have smartphones. So if you haven't done so already, download it on your, just see, click, fix is what you look for in the Apple Store or Google, and then you can kind of report graffiti, things like that. So it does delineate between public graffiti, you know, and public property, or weed addressed it, or private property, which would be a blight issue. And then there's some, you know, frequently asked questions as well, so. Thank you for that opportunity to talk about it.
You were the one that prompted it for me. I'm like, oh, that would be something, maybe you can do that. Just wanted to thank staff, Mark Cameron, for all your work, all your dedication to the city. Manistee Proud, I just feel really, really, very proud to be part of this city and all these people who take the time and the effort to make it such a wonderful place, so thank you guys. No?
I just want to thank Chief Cameron. You almost got me to tear up in front of all these people, I don't appreciate that, but I, I appreciate, I, it's been a pleasure working with you, and you will truly be missed. At that, I will take a motion to adjourn.